Should switch to view everyone.
Should I run?
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 16th to order. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmas.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis. Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Cody, could you change the view who's talking to view everyone, please? Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is in the light of the United States of America and to their beloved for which it stands, on a nation undergone indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think to meet the intent of the open meeting law, we have to have it that way, I think. So, as I remember being told once long ago. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as it has been presented?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have consent items. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for your approval, the City Council minutes of February 1st, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of February 8th, the Council's payable report of January 28th through February 10th, Public Works Safety minutes of February 4th, a resolution accepting project number 2001E, the sanitary sewer connection to 7th Avenue Northwest and authorizing final payment, a resolution approving purchase of two international trucks off state bid for the Public Works Department, a resolution approving purchase of 2021 Silverado pickup for Fire Department with additional equipment, the Finance Committee minutes of February 4th, Community Development Committee minutes of February 8th, consideration of authorizing Planning Commission to form the Comprehensive Plan Work Group for development of Wilmer's 2040 Comprehensive Plan, the Labor Relations minutes of February 9th, for council's acceptance, the Police Commission minutes of October 1st, the Wilmer Area Convention and Visitors Bureau minutes of December 15th, building report for the month of January, and for council's information, the Invest in Wilmer Board minutes of January 13th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion been made by Fagerly, seconded by Osmas to approve. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Is this where I poll, okay, I want to poll number F, Community Development?
Okay.
Let's pull D for quick discussion.
Okay, item number F, item, letter F and item number D have been pulled. Anything else? Now, staff advised me before the meeting started that this needs to be a resolution because there are resolutions included in the consent items, and staff will be preparing that, so we apologize that that was not in your packet, but staff will prepare that for me for signature for tomorrow. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmas.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. We'll start at the top of the alphabet with D. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to outline a couple of the action items that were taken at the Public Works Public Safety Meeting on February 4th, 2021. The first of those items would be a resolution accepting project number 2001-E, the sanitary sewer connection to 7th Avenue Northwest and authorizing final payment. The total amount was $12,409.36, and that will be payable to Land Pride Construction. The next item on there is a resolution approving the purchase of two international trucks off state bid for the Public Works Department, and the total amount for the trucks and all of the modifications that need to be made is the amount of $359,138. And again, that is going to North Central International, and further equipment will also be awarded and purchased from Towmaster. Again, that final amount, $359,138. The final action item that we had was a resolution approving the purchase of a 2021 Silverado pickup for the Fire Department with additional equipment. And just a little bit of background on that one, it is a 2021 Chevy. We are buying it on state contract, I believe, from Schweeder's Chevrolet in Wilmer, so we're purchasing it local here in the amount of $33,039 plus tax title and additional equipment not to exceed the amount of $20,000. And that's the breakdown of the Public Works resolutions.
I'm going to make a motion to approve that?
Yes, and with that, I would motion to approve those items.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the Public Works Safety Minutes overview by Councilmember Plowman as item number D. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson. Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, we have item number F, and it was pulled by Councilmember Fagerly. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Development staff is ready to proceed with the 2040 Planning Commission's Comprehensive Plan, which is done every 10 to 12 years. The Community Development Committee made a motion to have the mayor authorize this work group or task force. Staff would like four members from the Planning Commission and eight members from the community to work on this plan, which should take around nine months to complete. The Planning Commission did discuss this and approved it last Wednesday, February 10th. Also, by having this group, this could lead to having some of those members be appointed to the Planning Commission in the near future when the Planning Commission terms expire. So if there are any community members that would like to serve in this committee, please contact City Hall at (235) 4913, or the Community Development Department at (235) 8311. So if there's no questions, I move to file the minutes. Mr. Mayor.
Will these positions be appointed, be recommended by the mayor, or are they going to come through the Community Development process?
Community Development Department should get the names and then contact you.
Okay.
So you can appoint them. But it'll be four members on the Planning Commission. There are nine, but four of them will serve on this.
Okay.
So they're looking for eight members from the community.
So the mayor doesn't need to look for anybody, then?
Not right now.
Okay, perfect.
Unless you want to.
Well, I have some people that have contacted me that they want to serve in different capacities, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, so I should then get those names to Dr. Ramstead?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
[laughing].
I violated my own rule. Andrew slapped my hand. We have a motion that's been made and seconded to file the minute, or to, yeah, to file the overview, getting this wrong, but there's been a motion made and seconded to file the resolution for setting up the Community Development Committee as stated in February 8th. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is consideration of forensic analyst position within the Police Department, or Police Chief Feld.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Item before you this evening is consideration of the addition of a full-time forensic technology analyst to the Wilmer Police Department. In short, Wilmer PD has relied heavily on the city IT systems coordinator for our many technical needs at the Wilmer Police Department, including squad and office computer systems, squad car and body cameras, video read action, GPS receivers, thermal imaging, and many other electronic systems. With each year, technology needs increase along with related support services. Our office is reportedly one of the largest tech users in the city and occupy a large amount of time of IT time and expertise. Wilmer PD has been fortunate to have the full, to have the part-time assistance of the Wilmer IT Information Systems Coordinator to perform local forensic analysis of cellphones, computers, and video systems for investigations ranging from human trafficking, narcotics, and child pornography, to serious assaults, homicides, and property crimes. Over the years, Wilmer PD has invested in technology and training to perform forensic analysis locally versus relying on the Minnesota BCA, which typically has a several-month backlog on even on the most serious of crimes. Local forensic analysis provided more in-depth investigations and a faster resolution for cases. It is even provided for more real-time investigations such as missing persons or search and rescue where time is of the essence. In an analysis of both general IT needs for the Wilmer Police Department along with forensic analysis, we feel that the community and agency would be best served by the addition of a forensic technology analyst to handle both the investigative and general technology needs of the department. In your packet is a job description along with some of the Wilmer PD IT needs, past caseloads, and notable cases that were resolved by having our own forensic analyst. The City Wilmer Human Resources has researched the position and scored it as a pay range seven as a non-sworn department position. If this position is approved, our goal would be to hire a forensic analyst mid-year 2021. In discussions with the Finance Department and City Administrator, by doing so, we feel that the cost for this position in 2021 would be covered by some current and future unfilled city positions along with the Wilmer Police Department budget. This position would be an employee of the Wilmer Police Department and staffed at the Law Enforcement Center Building. A specialized office and other necessary related equipment is currently available for use there. It would be our request and recommendation that the City Council authorize the hire of a forensic technology analyst with the Wilmer Police Department, and I stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, Chief is asking if any of the council members have any questions of him? Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion. Councilmember Osmas.
Make a motion.
I have a question. So as a seven, how does that compare with other positions? Who else is a seven in the city? I just want to.
Ms. Beckman, can you shed some light on that, please?
I sure can. Just give me one moment here, and I'll pull up that contract. I do know off the top of my head, it is one pay range above our IT tech at a seven, and then let me just get a few other sevens for you.
Councilmember O'Brien, followed by Davis, followed by Nelson. Go ahead, Ms. Beckman.
So seven is also the building inspector and environmental specialist, and those are the only two in a seven right now. But just for reference, the six is our largest pay scale for that unit, building maintenance coordinator, cable coordinator, engineering tech, info systems tech, and several other positions for that six as well.
Okay, I was just trying to put that into perspective to the private sector and whether or not it was high enough pay that we're not going to have trouble filling it for that kind of a skill level.
In speaking with Human Resources, we believe that, you know, one step above a IT tech position would be at least a good start for this, to fill that position.
Councilmember O'Brien, followed by Davis, followed by Nelson.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the, make a amendment to pass a forensic analyst position for the Police Department.
Motion been made. Councilmember Davis.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Councilmember Davis or O'Brien, do you have additional comments, or, otherwise I'm going to Councilmember Nelson.
My question was answered. Thank you.
Additional questions from Council, Councilmember Butterfield?
What actually is going to be about the yearly pay on this number seven pay range?
Well, it's 2619 an hour, so 2619 times, somebody got a calculator, 2080.
Times 20.
2080, and then 36 times 2080.
26 what?
2619.
19 times 2080, 54.
54. And then the high range would be 3609.
So 26, 54. So 54 to 81,000, it sounds about right?
I believe so. I was sure I had it in my notes here, but it's not jumping out at me right now, so.
And I'm having trouble getting this.
Councilmember Osmas.
Who would supervise this person?
Right now, in the job description would be our detective sergeant, would be the supervisor, direct supervisor.
Additional comments? Councilmember Fagerly, followed by Osmas again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So is it better to have one full-time, or would it be better to train multiple people that we have in IT? Because we have full-time, you got sick leave, you got vacation, and then who covers that when they go on vacation? So, and then have you asked for this position before? Because I know you asked for a robot a few years ago.
Right.
And we never paid for that, but.
Sure. In our evaluation of this, we feel a full-time person would be the best fit for it because of the technical skill needed to try and find several people that can, can fill that and also to see cases through from beginning to end versus handing them off to other people sometimes can be confusing and that type of thing, too. So we feel the full-time position would be the best. And I'm sorry, your second question was the, the robot?
Did you ask for this position?
Oh, I'm sorry. With this, it was, it was asked for initially for the 2021 budget. It, at that time, they felt it was not the right fit for 2021, but I was asked to bring it up again.
Okay, and then, they should be pretty busy. You could outsource this person to other departments in the area, different counties, and charge them then?
Correct. That is, that is a possibility, and roughly figuring out the number of hours for just our general IT needs, we assume it would probably be around the 1,500 hours per year just to handle our computers and our in-house type things. Historically, and it gets busier every year, but it's been about 500 plus, 500 to 700 hours of computer forensic work in the past when, if there's been the very rare moments where our cases haven't filled up the time, the forensic analyst has done work for other counties, and we've billed it $60 an hour, plus if there's expenses for hard drives or things like that. So there is the potential to, to bill out with this, but we feel that, you know, a lot of their time will be occupied with our local cases here, too, so.
And then just one more. So when we have to use the state system, whatever, do they charge us then?
They do not. The downfall with that is that it can oftentimes be even for a homicide case, could be a five or six-month backlog before you would be getting any results of the searches, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Osmas, followed by Nelson.
I'm totally in favor of the position. I know there's a need, and I know we would definitely have the workload for this individual. How are we paying for this, and was that in the budget? And is there any consideration then of a decrease in one person on the manpower to fund this position?
In, in the discussions that we had on it, we felt that the, the best fit for, if it was approved, for paying this year would be to potentially fill this position mid-year. And then some things that could account for the wages and benefits would be other city positions that are, have been funded up to this point but unfilled, like the Assistant City Administrator, the, there's a downtown position, there's a couple others that are unfilled. Also, we'll have two retirements at the Police Department this year. Those probably won't be filled right away. This would be an additional non-sworn position, so it'd be adding one more person to the Wilmer Police Department overall roster. We still need those, those two officers replaced by officers when their time comes. But in speaking with Finance Department, City Administrator, we feel that the unfilled city positions, if we hire mid-year, would be able to cover this along with, you know, potentially there could be some reductions in some equipment or maybe even our CSO part-time hours if need be to help make sure that we cover the gaps.
So 2022 is when we really got to figure out how we're going to fund it.
That would be in the budget request, correct.
Sure. That's it for me.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
Questions are similar to Councilmember Osmas, but we are, if I'm, if I listen to the labor meeting, and it's my understanding that the plan was to absorb this into the Police Department, and it sounds like multiple departments from what Chief just said, but it is a commitment, we're not retiring somebody for this year, this is a commitment to a full-time position that with benefits, I believe, probably gets close to $100,000 or, or could be. But I think that's important for us to understand it was not in the budget this year, and that we are committing to using other money, but committing that this would be in the budget next year. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
To answer your question, Councilmember Nelson?
I think so. I'm, I'm, I'm not real comfortable with that commitment since it wasn't in the budget this year, but I understand the position, and actually, I know that we had a discussion during the budgeting process as to the request and that it wasn't in there. And so I'm just trying to understand the comments that were made, where would we be replacing the person in IT? The amount of work that the IT person said they were doing for the Police Department, but we're behind in IT, and so it feels a little more complicated than, than just adding a person to.
Yeah, questions come up, I think, twice now, maybe three times, maybe I'll address it a little bit. The position, Chief Feld had requested this position through the budgeting process, and when I met with the City Administrator and the Finance Director, I had removed the position from consideration because it was my desire to move forward with the Community Outreach Coordinator and the Downtown Main Street Wilmer position. Those were positions that I felt were valuable, along with the Assistant City Administrator, and then moving the position in the Finance Department to include a position for Assistant Finance Director. So those became my priorities in the budget that I prepared and submitted to you as a council for consideration and adoption, which subsequently you did. This is just taking some of those unfilled dollars this first year. I had a conversation with Chief Feld and with the City Administrator and said that in 2022, I would add that position, that'd be the first position I'd add into the, into the budget for 2022, so that that position would be funded in 2022. So maybe with that clarification, that might answer some of the questions as far as what the intent was on the financing side and why I had removed it from the consideration. So, staff did not remove it, City Administrator did not remove it. I recommended removing it because I had the other priorities that I wanted to sequel forward first, so that was, that's on the back of the mayor. Councilmember Butterfield?
Just wondering on some unknown costs on this, you know, for any forensic systems, electronics, any other things that are going to add up in the next six months to a year for this position that is going to be needed?
There should not. You know, we've, at the Police Department, we've invested in the technology for analyzing cellphones, computers, and that type of thing. Everything, as long as there's not a catastrophic failure of one of them, should be adequate for the next few years. In the future capital improvement plan, I think it's in 2023, I think there is some money set there for upgrading some of the equipment if need be. But right now, we don't see any technology, media technology needs that we need there, so.
Additional questions? City, Mr. O'Brien, followed by the City Administrator Grammets. Councilmember O'Brien.
I think one of the things, too, and we talked a little bit about, oops, sorry.
The other way.
One of the things we talked about was, you know, are other agencies using this position as well? The answer was yes, and they will be paying the city for their service, for their service. That's one way. Plus, there's also additions. I've talked to Finance, and we talked about workman's comp. There's some workman's comp issues where people are out on workman's comp right now. That saves some money. That money can be also be used. I think the most important thing is, if you guys look at the, the use of this position here just in the last four months, especially the latest homicide, you will see, one of the things you guys probably don't know, is the BCA is normally the one that does the analysis, and I know Mrs. Osmas knows this, and you can get backed up for months waiting for them. Right now, our IT people are doing the work for our local BCA and the Sheriff's Department and the FBI, and it goes on and on and on. So it's very important, when you look at this position, that it should have been funded from the beginning. I mean, if you look at the use and what they're for, I mean, even just before Christmas time, we had another situation where this IT person or position was, was the person who put this, a person away for a felony that would not have happened. That analysis position wouldn't have been there if he wouldn't have been there, this would not have happened. This is extremely important for our community, and I think anybody that sees this and looks at the position, if you look at the position description, is that we need to find a way. And like I said before, there is a way, people will be paying the city of Wilmer, the PD, for the position, but the BCA, like I said, if normal people wanted to do this, they are backed up so far right now, we're helping them here locally. I mean, you must understand the need that this position has, and we need to find a way.
Mr. Grammets.
Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, depending on the program, the city can join the BCA on certain programs, and they will in turn recognize the fact that the city is performing work on behalf of the BCA and will provide computers, software, and other resources. So it's not necessarily 100% of, you know, our funds supporting this position for some of the hardware in the future. There are opportunities to access the BCA funding for, for things. We just have to say, you know, we're going to be utilizing this equipment for this program, and they'll go, okay, here's a computer, here's software to, to help you do the work, because as noted, they are backed up, so anything we do will help them, and they're willing to provide some funds to be utilized. So setting up the position is the first step, and as Chief Feld stated, we've got equipment, software that we're currently utilizing, so there really shouldn't be additional cost to bringing on this. cost to bringing on this position. The other thing I would just note is that we will, you know, post this and not knowing who may have the skills that is interested in doing this, I think everybody makes an assumption that, you know, a person is going to want this. We may have two. So it's, it's not cut and dried. So we don't exactly know what's going to happen, you know, in IT. Maybe it stays the same. Maybe it, maybe it changes in the future. But I guess I'm not going so far as to say I already know what's, what's going to happen because I don't. We'll have to go through the process, see who applies, and then we'll deal with any needs, you know, for IT staff after that.
Okay, additional comments, additional comments to the question? Okay, I have, I have a couple of questions. So Scott County has a similar position. And in doing my research, trying to find other cities that had something comparable to this, that's the only one I found that was a civilian position. Are you aware of any other civilian positions? I know there's a number in police departments, but I'm talking specifically civilian positions.
You know, I don't. We, in our analysis, to find somebody that had both a police officer license and the technical expertise here would be somewhat difficult. But it is, at least through the country, on some training that, you know, our analyst has gone to and that type of thing. There are a number of civilians that are working in those roles in different states, but here in Minnesota, very rare.
Right, right. That's the only one I could find. And I just wanted to know if I missed something. So that's the only one I found. I know there's a number of them in police departments. And then I just want to speak a little bit to what the City Administrator just talked about. I think it's very important to understand that, as Councilmember Nelson had stated, our IT functions probably have suffered a little bit because of all the work that's been going into this position out of the Police Department. So it's imperative, I believe, that the council make sure that that position remains whole. Because there's a lot of work there that needs to be done. And our IT people do fabulous work. But we need to make sure that we, if, if needed, that fill that in or at least make sure that, that, that position remains solid as well. And so I think that that's something that we need to talk about. So additional comments. Councilmember Osmus followed by Butterfield.
Okay, I know several years ago, we had trained a police officer to do some IT functions like this. Are they, are we able to utilize them at all anymore? Or is the training that they had outdated and, and they're of no use now?
A very limited amount, just because of the timeframe that's gone by and the changes in technology, probably, you know, twenty percent of what that officer learned is still applicable. So it's keeping somebody up to speed can be difficult. He's still used on, you know, for some, some limited type things, but.
Downloading.
Correct.
A phone.
Right.
Okay, that's it.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Looking at, you know, from 2020, you know, there was eleven cases from the Kennedy Sheriff's Department, Chippewa County and Meeker County. For the rest of this year, how much could we farm out to other counties to help pay for this position for the rest of this year? To get us by till we actually, you know, see if it works in a budget full-time?
Well, right now, I know that since the beginning of the year, there have been three other agencies that have contacted us to try and see if we had time to do the work. They've been turned down. Specifically right now, they're working on the homicide case, which I think was eighteen different devices that they're still analyzing and getting to the, the end of that. There's also a, an International Crimes Against Children Task Force case that just arrived, which is a child pornography case that they, it's another fourteen devices that, you know, cell phones and computers and things that they're analyzing. So right now they've had to turn down work, you know, if they're, once all the analysis of that is done, if there's time, then they are willing to take on, you know, work from other counties. Some, some of the, the work can be done quickly. It could be an afternoon, you know, two or three hour type things. Some things might be a several day project. So. But right now the priority is on those two Wilmer cases. So there's the potential for, for, for billing out other agencies yet this year.
Councilmember Osk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding based on the conversations we had at Labor is that the question before us would not affect the, the current hours at IT, the current positions at IT. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, that was my understanding in sitting in on the meeting as well, correct.
I just wanted to make sure when you, you made a comment just a second ago that encouraged us to, to keep those IT, IT hours. And regardless if a specific person were to move positions, that position would still stay in IT and in theory be refilled.
Yeah, the only reason I made the comment I did is that there was a, a question as to whether that position would be filled. And so I was just affirming the fact that that needs to remain as what was talked about at, at Labor.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? We have a motion that's been made and seconded to consider the forensic analyst position. The motion was made by O'Brien, seconded by Davis. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Nay.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That motion passes. Next is a consideration of the City Administrator Search Brochure. Chief Feld, thank you for your presentation and thank you for the work that you did. Consideration of the City Administrator Search Brochure. Ms. Beckman.
Good evening. Do you have in your packets, starting on page one seventy-four, the updated search brochure for our City Administrator's search for Baker Tilly? It is very similar to the brochure they created for us a year and a half ago, but we did update the dates and school loan information, all of that data, as well as more information on City Administrator Grammons. Otherwise, it says largely the same. We unfortunately didn't have it quite in time for the February ninth Labor Meeting, so it is coming to the full council for the first time tonight. And we were hoping to get approval rather than waiting an additional two weeks so it could go to Labor first. And it looks like we do have Patty here as well, if anyone does have any additional questions for her too.
Okay, take a motion to approve the consideration of the City Administrator's Search Brochure?
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Motion was made by Councilmember Plowman, seconded by Councilmember Osk. Questions for either Ms. Beckman or Ms. Hemanova. Did I say it right this time? Patty.
You did, thank you.
Any questions by council? Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not so many questions, I guess. I, I would just like to comment on it. I read through it yesterday and today. I, I like the information that it conveys and it feels to me as though it's, it's forward-looking in nature. It's bright and colorful and modern. And it, it helps brand our town and, and give our town a, a, a look and a feel that is modern, bright, growing, all those things. So I will commend them on that. I guess the only, the only thing that I would have, and this is really hard for me to do because I hate, I hate micromanaging, but I'm also, I began my career as a graphic designer. So, so I gotta just, I gotta integrate it. And I gotta say, just from an outside lens, my first question was if I was a potential candidate from outside of the region, I would be looking at the brochure and I would be wondering where exactly is Wilmer. And so just a comment and not even a directive, but just a comment, maybe there would be some graphical way to, to enhance maybe Wilmer and, and, and also provide some, you know, like I said, some, some, some graphical enhancement, but also to clearly delineate exactly where Wilmer is located and, and our position in the great state of Minnesota. And that would be the only kind of constructive feedback that I would have. Otherwise, I, I love it.
Yeah, it's in the narrative. I'm sure you saw it in the narrative where it's located, where it is located. So that, that, that's good. So, but it is, it would be good to have a picture that way. I like the fact that they had a lot of diversity in it as well.
It does.
Additional comments or questions? Patty, are there any comments you'd like to make?
I really appreciate the comments. What we can also do is look for a little map. And we can maybe put a map with a star where you guys are located within the state of Minnesota and maybe put a graphic that can illustrate that a little bit clearer, if that works. We can certainly do that and, and show that to you as early as tomorrow. Our intent is, is to advertise as early as Friday if possible or to, you know, once we make these changes for you. And then we would be advertising for a good month. We would be advertising at all the local, the organizations. We will do a local and a national search for the position. We will also be utilizing LinkedIn and a huge database of candidates that could possibly be candidates for the position. From there, what we will then do is I will work with, we will get the questionnaire. The questionnaire is about ten to fifteen questions. That will be the candidates. A due diligence report, a due diligence report is what their salary expectation is. Also, if there has been any separation that they had, terminations, we want to know about. We want them to list those. We also ask if we do a media search. Is there anything embarrassing that we as a firm need to know about and you as an organization? And we want them to be as honest as possible upfront because we will be doing a Nexus search. And if there are things that are turned up and they didn't disclose them to us, those things will be discussed with you guys. Then we will be getting a semifinalist report to you that will consist of resumes, cover letters, questionnaires, and also the due diligence. At the top, we will then narrow down the candidates for you based off of the qualifications. Those highly qualified candidates that would be coming forward, we would be doing a one-way web interview that they will also be doing. What that is, is it is an interview through the computer. They don't know the questions ahead of time. They have up to about three minutes to answer each of the questions. We have about three to four of them. And that link will then also be shared with the council as part of the process. So we've got a lot going on. We'd like to get this advertised as soon as possible. Because of, you know, all the steps that are involved, we would probably be looking at the middle of May for the actual interviews. My intent is, is once we advertise for the position, I will get you a timeline to take a look at and hopefully it's an agreed, you guys will agree about, agree upon the timeline. It might need to be modified a little bit due to, there's a break in here, there's Easter coming up. So we just have to take that into consideration. So otherwise, I can get that timeline to you probably by as early as Friday to take a look at.
Thank you for that overview. A little concerning to me to hear that we'll be doing interviews in May when our administrator said he wants to be gone that first week in June. So that really is going to crunch us down on our timelines. So are there any areas that we can tighten that up at all or not?
Mayor, you're bringing up a really good question. The most important thing is making sure that we're out there and we're advertising for a good month. I certainly see that there are areas that we can tighten up. What I will do is I'll work with Brian and Samantha to take a look at it before we share it with the full council. There are a few things that we could probably tighten up, but then we're going to need to get out there ASAP to, to be advertising as soon as Friday.
Okay. Any other questions by council? Okay, we have a motion that's been made and seconded to approve the Administrator, City Administrator Search Brochure as in our document, as Ms. Beckman had shared with us, and then the comments by our professionals from Baker Tilly. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien. Butterfield.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That, that motion passes as well. Before I go to community pride announcements, some Councilmember O'Brien had asked me earlier in the, or late last week, if he could give an update on Municipal Utilities Commission Minutes of February eighth. So I forgot to call you for that during the consent item. So this, Councilmember O'Brien, are there any comments you wish to make?
Yeah, during the, the board meeting, they talked about the demolition of the water plant. And they voted unanimously to, to basically demolish or have a demolition of that. And I don't know if you know it, but there's a lot of, a lot of things going with that. There's lead in there. There's also a lot of asbestos in there. So there's a lot of abatement issues. What they did do after they unanimously decided that they're going to demolish it, they decided they would give the public until the first of September, if they wanted to come in with a couple million dollars and a contract for an idea what they want to do with that building, they would look at it. And so that's basically where they're at right now is they voted to demolish or demolition. And that's what they, we voted for. We need to look for, of course, as the council is, to demolish or demolition of that plant. And the abatement, of course, is with that as well.
Okay, thank you for that report. And again, that was approved through our, our consent items under Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission Minutes of February eighth. So with that, I'll go to the community, community pride announcements. And the only thing I have is last, last meeting, the City Administrator had handed me a note saying that our four new, four new firefighters had passed their state certification test. And I had it in my whole stack of papers and I, I forgot to report that to you at the last meeting. So, and I had received nothing else from the community in regards to that. So that will conclude that portion of the agenda. Next, we have a council committee, announcement of council committee meeting dates, Public Works Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works and Safety will be meeting this Thursday, the eighteenth, at four thirty PM.
Okay, Finance.
About that. Finance will be meeting this Thursday, February eighteenth, at five forty-five.
Community Development.
No meeting.
Labor.
Labor will not be meeting.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second. Motion made and seconded, we're adjourned.